Welcome to our meeting tonight. Before the meeting begins, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Today, oh God, we ask for your spirit to be at work in our midst, that you might stir up in us the gifts that we need to lead this city with integrity and focus on the task at hand. Give us the courage to consider all those who are affected by the decisions we make. Help us to remember those who labor on our behalf, our employees and vendors, and all those whose livelihood is connected to this city. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 25th, 2017, if it's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm only going to accept the minutes of the September 25th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion. Lot objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. I'm hearing the audience participation on any of our agenda items, but before we do that, Mr. Waddington, you're, I want to share something with you. Your competitive exploits internationally are legend as they should be, but I rarely have an occasion to tell you about something like this, and so I wanted to do this today. So, my wife and I participated in the Blue Street 5K, Blue Street Pride 5K on Saturday, and I got a silver medal.
Oh.
And I, I wanted to explain it. You might be premature.
(Laughter)
I want to tell you, because I attribute this medal to three things. One, Mr. Waddington, diligent preparation.
(Laughter)
Two, the fact that there was no bronze medal. The demographics worked in my favor, because there were only two men there who were, ended their careers in the ages of 50 and 59. And the third reason why I think I won this medal is that my wife insisted that she turn in my card, which I normally wouldn't do since with a time of 55 minutes, it didn't seem warranted.
(Laughter)
The fellow who, well, we walked. The fellow who first finished ahead of me by about 40 minutes, I went to find him, but he was already home and showered, so, but it's still the medal I got. (Inaudible)
I hate to burst your bubble, but I'm gonna talk about Mr. Waddington's exploits.
Please do.
Mr. Dave Waddington and Al Nichols, our chairman of the Audit and Finance Committee, are highlighted on the front page of Serving Our Seniors newsletter, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Dave's over there, he hates when we do this, but just wanted to bring the attention to them for their exploits. They're still pretty fit and trim for, I won't say what their age group is, but congratulations to those two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Back in the day, I could move some steel. I have trouble tying my shoes in the morning. That's the truth.
You're still here and you're still trying. So, audience participation, anyone wishing to address any of our agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and share with us your thoughts. It's a light agenda tonight, so I don't see anyone stepping to the microphone, so would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff?
Some of them.
Second.
A motion, second discussion. Lot objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda item, please? Oh, I didn't do it right again. I thought I had it right. Would someone care to make a motion with respect to our consent agenda items? I'm sorry, first, does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items, place it on the regular agenda? You know, it's just why they don't give the Irish a two-week break between meetings. Then would someone care to make such a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I should like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, declaring that all, both ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented, the City Commission, under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda item, please?
Yes, Item A is a zone map amendment for four parcels located at 113 and 117 Neal Street, rear lot on Wayne Street, and 118 Division Street. Item B is an opt-in endorsement agreement with Constellation New Energy for the gas aggregation program. And Item C is approval of amendments to the Erie County Solid Waste Management District Plan update.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I noticed that a couple of representatives from Gunlock Sheep Metal are in, are in the audience, and I wonder if they would like to make any statement or comment about what they intend to do, plan on doing. I can, but we've talked about it at several meetings, so... And I just want to give you the opportunity, you don't have to, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I wanted to, really want to laud the fact that Gunlock Sheep Metal is a plus 100-year-old company in the city, and it's, it is, it's a wonderful thing that they are choosing to expand within our city limits, when as we all know, it is very easy for mechanical contractors, electrical contractors, construction contractors to seek wide-open spaces, and that are, that are easier to navigate in our businesses. And we thank you for your commitment to the city and for having the faith and trust in this city and going forward from there. We welcome your expansion and hope you have another 100 years.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Those ordinances and the resolution are adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, Item One is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a virtual server with external storage and licensing from Ultra Level Incorporated of Southfield, Michigan, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion. Hamilton, would you care to offer an explanation to the public of this purchase that you're recommending?
Certainly, through you, Commissioner President. This project's actually been a priority since I got here, but it kept getting put on the back burner for phone systems and other things like that. So, we spent a lot of time in the investigation phase of this, we've looked at it, looked at different options, what we can do, how we can do this that best suits the city. We decided on a product from Dell through Ultra Level. Each server is fully redundant. The servers of themselves are redundant on the other server, so there's no possibility that we can lose our servers once this is in place. It makes it so it's scalable, it makes it flexible, so we can adjust to things that come up. A virtual environment is basically a single piece of hardware that lets you have multiple servers on top of it. So, even though there's a 53 grand price tag on this, when you realize that we don't have to keep buying old physical servers and replace them every three years, then your return on investment runs down to a really short period of time. The servers we currently have are three years plus, which means they're all past being replaced. If we were to replace each one of them at 10 to 15 grand apiece, we would already pay for this. So, then this is designed for disaster recovery and functionality for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Commissioners, questions or comments? I do appreciate all the work you do that is kind of quiet, kind of behind the scenes, you just go about getting it done, but when a couple of us came into office first four years ago, it was, you know, we didn't have a good situation, because the commission had not been able to make significant investments in hardware and software in quite some period of time. Those here were doing the very best that they possibly could, but did a great effort able to make those investments, so we continue, can continue to provide the services that we need to provide on an improved and uninterrupted basis, so, thank you. Unless there are questions or comments, commissioners, Mrs. Cresser, just pull the commissioners on the motion.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Now, on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That actually includes our items of regular business. We're moving over now to the motion, please.
Thank you, commissioners, audience, and staff. Due to the short agenda of the commission legislative items tonight, I have added a extremely long city manager's report for you to listen to. Not on purpose, actually, just coincidentally, we do have a pretty long one for those who came from the audience, so you get your money's worth. So, I'll start with the donations first. A $5 donation to the Sandusky Police Department received from an anonymous donor. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So, motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion. Lot objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks.
Also, Rusty Zeller donated and applied the car wrap that was placed on the SPD play car located at the new Lyons Park play area. The play car is a replica of SPD Cruiser Number Eight, which is dedicated to the memory of fallen officer Andy Dunn. Rusty also did the wrap that is on the S8. We'd like to thank him and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion. Lot objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks.
Also, not to celebrate one commissioner twice in the same night or to embarrass him, but I had a chance to attend the Volunteer Center of Sandusky or Erie County's annual luncheon on Sunday with Commissioner Poole and Commissioner Waddington, and several local dignitaries received awards, but among them was Commissioner Waddington. They talked about his years of service cleaning up city parks, working on behalf of state schools, and so many different efforts in the city, so I just wanted to reiterate that I was proud to be there with both commissioners and to see Dave get that award, so congratulations to you, sir. Moving on to new and old business, administration. We're excited to say that the new city phone system is now fully operation, operational. The implementation went smoothly with zero unplanned downtime. Doing the design, build, and implementation in-house saved the city in excess of $25,000, and I want to give a special thanks to Don Ruboudis and Stuart. Don, for his tireless work to the project, which freed up Stuart to work on the design and configuration. Don, thank you for your really hard work, and Stuart, thanks for overseeing that project. Moving on to the police department. The department has notified of provisional approval and received final certification through the Ohio Collaborative for two of the three new state standard policies being incorporated. Community engagement, body worn cameras, and telecommunicator training are the three policies that are to be submitted and approved by the March of 2018. These policies are in addition to the policies of use of force and deadly force and recruitment and hiring that were approved for March of 2017. Thank you Lieutenant Dogger and Assistant Law Director Trevor Hayberger, who's with us tonight, for their diligent work on this process. Also, members of the department are wearing pink badges in this month in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout October. Moving on to the fire department. The firefighter silent parade was held on Sunday, October 8th, to kick off Fire Prevention Month. The parade left the Erie County Fairgrounds and proceeded down Columbus Avenue to the firefighter memorial located in the park. I know several commissioners, including Commissioner Lockhart as liaison of the fire department, were present at that. Also, on-duty and off-duty fire department personnel assisted in helping with citywide cleanup. That was held Saturday, September 30th, so we thank them for that service. Moving on to the finance department. The city successfully sold its 2.9 million various-purpose notes on September 20th to Jefferies and Company from New York, New York. The net interest cost was 1.135%, and the notes will mature in October of next year. Also, the City of Sandusky audit for 2016 was released by the State Auditor's Office on September 26th and can be downloaded from their website. Based on the clean audit, the city will once again qualify for the Auditor of State Award for the 2016 year. The Auditor of State Award is presented to local governments upon completion of a financial audit that are in compliance with numerous accounting and auditing requirements, so thank you to Hank and your team for making sure that we had another clean audit. Also, the next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday, October 20th, at 7:45 a.m. Again, the finance committee will meet Friday, October 20th, at 7:45 a.m. in the city commission chambers. Moving on to the public works department. The Division of Streets and Traffic has been hard at work with seasonal milling and filling projects on six smaller streets throughout the city, including portions of Sycamore Line, Olds, Cable, and North Depot Streets. This work is funded by Issue Eight, and purchase of the asphalt was approved earlier this year. Once paving concludes, crews will transition to citywide leaf pickup in November. Further details on leaf collection will be released soon. The Cleveland Water Alliance and Digital Sea will be bringing an event titled Internet of Water Challenge to the region at the end of the month. The city of Sandusky has been working closely as a partner, and more information will be available soon. Also, Reba Marine Construction will be performing maintenance dredging in Sandusky Bay on behalf of the Corps of Engineers, beginning October 12th and 16th, and lasting six to eight weeks. They will be docked along a slip just east of the coal docks at night. In addition, Venice Heights Boulevard was paved last week and is looking good. Please may remember that while the street is in much improved conditions, that it is within a school zone, so drive with caution. A ceremonial rededication of Lyons Park will be held on Tuesday, October 24th, at 5:00 p.m. at Lyons Park. The new parking lot and play equipment mark the sixth and seventh projects at the park over the past several years. More information will be available this week on celebrating the new improvements to Lyons Park on the West End. Also, the wayfinding project is currently underway. Signs are currently being fabricated and foundations are being installed. In fact, we've had some questions, I know some commissioners have mentioned questions from folks who are noticing the locations, so if you have those, please let them know or refer them to myself or Director Klein, and we can let them know what's planned for their area. The project will result in citywide comprehensive signage program that'll help our visitors and locals navigate through the city. Funding is through the MPO, City of Sandusky, Lake Erie Shores and Islands, and other unannounced sponsors. Construction is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. Also, the Venice Road Westside Walkability Project. Initial project discussions have been held regarding project cost, funding sources, and alternatives. The project will include water work, storm sewer work, bikeway and sidewalk, and on-street bike striping in various sections along Venice Road from Fremont to Tiffin Avenue. Water and storm sewer work along the majority of Venice from Fremont to Edgewater and south in the Sagamore Street area will also occur. The project will be discussed during the West Side Neighborhood Meeting, taking place tomorrow evening. The Justice Center. Fit plan is nearing completion, and we are developing cost estimates for two to three sites. Staff will develop a recommendation to the commission and to the selection committee before the end of this year. Moving on to the community development department. The City of Sandusky intends to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Community Development Block Grant Program an amendment to its fiscal year 2017 annual action plan. It is anticipated that the city commission will consider this amendment during the course of its meeting on November 13th, 2017. There are three separate amendments being proposed. The first amendment is to eliminate the 2017 economic development revolving loan fund activity. The project budget for this activity was $50,000 and will go to zero. Funding for this activity is no longer needed for the current program year. The second amendment is to increase the clearance and demolition activity from $108,000 and change to $148,000 and change. This $40,000 increase will come from the current economic development revolving loan fund account. And the third and final amendment, which is being proposed, is to create a new activity titled Public Facilities. The new activity will have a budget of up to $610,000, which will come from the current economic development revolving loan fund, and would be used for the engineering and construction plans for the Jackson Street Pier and other eligible projects. The reasons for these amendments to federal funding include, at no time, the city can exceed one and a half times in balance the total of the CDBG annual allocation. The revolving loan fund program proved difficult to use and causes to exceed the threshold nearly every year, and it became recommended, as other resources became available for economic development activities, to reprogram those funds to infrastructure where we have a great need. And then the Issue Eight Economic Development Funds Annual are providing nearly as many resources for economic development as the comprehensive total of the revolving loan fund. Therefore, staff made the recommendation to reprogram this to fund public infrastructure and facilities. Also, the historic Columbus Avenue Commercial District. Maru's Brothers Construction did successfully submit its final National Register District application for the Columbus Avenue Commercial District expansion. The proposed expanded district was considered by the Ohio Historic Site Preservation Advisory Board at the regular September meeting and was approved unanimously. It is anticipated that the National Park Service will provide final sign-off of the new district in the next 30 to 45 days, and that the district will be official by January 1st of 2018. I'd like to thank Angie and Casey Sparks and others from the city staff who worked really hard to make that possible. Also, we're in active conversations with respective party, parties in relation to various development initiatives, including Amusement Ales, the Leaking Boot, and the former Keller site. The new transit routes are also currently in effect. Information on the new routes is available on the city website, as well as on the buses, and the leased buses from Ottawa County Transportation Agency have arrived and are on the road. A reminder that we will have a West Side Neighborhood Meeting on Wednesday, October 11th, that's tomorrow evening, at 5:00 p.m. That'll take place in the commission chambers. Again, the West Side Neighborhood Meeting will take place tomorrow in the commission chambers at 5:00 p.m. Regular planning commission meeting will be held October 25th at 4:30 p.m., also in the commission chambers. In addition, the ADA Fair Housing Board meeting will be held October 23rd at 1:00 p.m., also in the commission chambers. Moving on to the Department of Public Services. We partnered with SMCC on Thursday for their annual service day at Sandusky Central Catholic Schools, or St. Mary's High School. Kids from grades seven through 12 participated in cleaning of the downtown and waterfront in Sandusky. This is the third year in a row that they have participated in the service day event. We want to thank Brittany Sternberg from Sandusky Central Catholic Schools and her staff and the kids for helping to keep Sandusky clean. Also, drive-through drop-off day was a success, thanks to all who all participated in the event. Special thanks to all the city employees who helped, along with Commissioners Waddington, Murray, and Brady, as well as the Sandusky and Fire and Police Departments. Thank you to participating organizations, including Barnes Nursery, Cyclone, Sandusky Steel, Goodwill, and Interstate Batteries. This event grows each year, and we look forward to the spring 2018 event. Moving on to recreation. There will be a request for proposals for operation of the Shelby Street Boat Ramp in 2018. Those will be available on October 12th in the city manager's office and on the city website. Proposals to manage the Shelby Street Boat Ramp must be submitted by November 9th at 3:00 p.m. And finally, trick-or-treat in the City of Sandusky will include a downtown merchant trick-or-treat that'll take place on Saturday, October 28th, at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's again, Saturday, October 28th, with the downtown merchants from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and a citywide trick-or-treat that'll take place on Halloween, or October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30. So, the citywide trick-or-treat will take place on October 31st from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilpser. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
I'll be...
Mr. Wilpser, regarding the proposed reprogramming of CDGB funding in the revolving loan fund, I wonder, I wonder if you or a member of staff, I know Mr. Lasko's pretty involved in this area, could share with us the problems that we've had in getting takers for those revolving loan fund dollars?
Absolutely. I will defer to Director Lasko, but can say before he gives you these details, that he, along with Angie and Ariel and others who work on the CDBG on a regular basis, have worked very hard to try to deploy those revolving loan funds over the last few years without success, and I'll kind of turn that over to him to explain some of the challenges, and also the reality that we have better sources for those programs now. So, Matt?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission. We sort of took a three, three-and-a-half-year look back at both our Issue Eight Economic Development Funds and our revolving loan fund, which has been historically the only resource the city has had to deploy to small businesses or even moderately-sized businesses within the city. And what we've seen over the last three years is that, in the revolving loan fund, we've only had three total applications submitted. Only one of those has ever been for a project that has come to fruition, which resulted in $57,500 being deployed onto the streets through the revolving loan fund. Conversely, under the Issue Eight program, we've gotten $1.15 million onto the streets, and looking at businesses assisted between those two programs, the revolving loan fund helped one business over the last three years, whereas our Issue Eight programs have helped 59 businesses. And with that comes pretty significant disparities between the jobs that were retained or created through the two programs, where the revolving loan fund was able to create or retain three jobs, and the Issue Eight economic development programs have created or retained 179 jobs. So, that's sort of some of our outputs, but I think what we heard from customers, as we've always been trying to market the revolving loan fund as a complimentary source or only city source, is we heard from multiple folks, several factors that come up that create several challenges, that make it economically inefficient to use the revolving loan funds. Namely, it does trigger federal prevailing wage, which anyone that is familiar with wage rates locally compared to what's required at the federal level, it's pretty drastic. It's about a 20% to 30% increase to construction costs, which actually makes the low percentage rate offered through the revolving loan fund an incentive not worth taking. It actually makes the project more expensive. We also know the projects require fairly detailed certified payrolls to be developed by either the contractor or the person who took out the loan, which, again, are very detailed and cumbersome for those receiving the funds to undertake. We also know, unfortunately, that we've had a pretty significant default rate through the revolving loan fund, which creates challenges for our legal department and outside counsel to go after those funds. And I think, fourthly, and importantly, as we've tried to be very responsive to folks and respond to their projects in a timely manner, any project utilizing revolving loan funds requires an environmental review, which is about a 60-to-90-day process, just to get the okay from HUD to move forward on the project, and that isn't even taking into consideration the time to negotiate things like loan agreements, payback promissory note agreements, et cetera. Whereas with our Issue Eight funds, we've normally been on a 30-to-40-day turnaround time by going to our Economic Development Incentive Committee. So, our ability to be timely to folks is much more successful through our Issue Eight program, and I think the outputs would also speak to the drastic differences between those two. And once we realized that we're being terribly successful with Issue Eight, one could actually argue, and I'd go back and look at the stat, we've actually deployed more money through the Issue Eight program in the last three years than revolving loan fund has done in 20 to 25 years. So, once we took that into consideration with the fact that we knew that having potentially over one and a half times of our annual CDBG allocation was putting at risk our normal CDBG allocation that goes into things like slum and blight clearance and infrastructure, we thought it was very, very important to make the recommendation ultimately to the public and to commission to move those funds out of the revolving loan fund, to not jeopardize our traditional annual allocation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lasko, and I understand one of the additional considerations are maybe built into what you said, was that if we remain with that allocation, not only do we jeopardize next year's funds, but we risk having to give some of these monies back, and at this point, it's a use it or lose it proposition.
That's exactly correct, and I know some of the questions that came up at the CPAC meeting, for example, last week were, you know, can these funds be used on other types of projects? So, instead of putting it into things like Jackson Street Pier and public facilities, could you have programmed it into streets? And on its face, the answer is yes, but there's one big distinction, which is those projects, whether it's streets or something else, still require an environmental review process that they'd have to go through. So, you'd have that 60-to-90-day process that these projects would have to go through, whereas things like the construction drawings and engineering drawings from Jackson Street Pier are actually exempt through the environmental review process, and you wouldn't lose those 60 to 90 days, because the other key date is these funds have to actually be expensed by next April, and any project that would have to go through the environmental review process would jeopardize the city's ability to get those funds out the door.
Because you've got to go through, after that, you've got to go through requests for proposals, and then reviewing those, and submitting the bid, and then doing the for proposals, and then reviewing those, and submitting the bid, and then doing the actual work.
That's exactly correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lasko, my limited experience with CDGB stuff, and you probably know all of them, because I bring them either to you and Maria, or perhaps Angie. And my experience is, the potential person that I'm trying to sell that on runs from that, and it runs from that opportunity instead of runs to it. And each time they explain to me that the reporting requirements for that, they find so burdensome and so cumbersome, and there's no way to shortcut that. They might be looking at $10,000, $15,000 in CDGB money, and they might spend half of that doing reporting. That doesn't work in the private sector.
No, and I think that's fair. And given the modest size of some of the projects that have explored the revolving loan fund, what happens is, let's say it's a $15,000 request to the city. The $15,000 they're requesting is not the only thing that is subject to prevailing wage. The entire project becomes tainted, for lack of a better term. And if it was a $500,000 project, the whole project is subject to prevailing wage. You add on top of that the fact of having to walk small business owners and their contractors through what is a cumbersome paperwork process is very challenging. And I get for many, many years, this was most cities' only resource to provide to folks. So they got through it, they muddled through it. I think the fact that we've gotten almost $1.2 million out the door in other ways, through other programs, that has paralleled the last 20 years of the revolving loan fund is a huge testament to the fact that we're being more user-friendly, we're being more customer-friendly and more responsive.
And you're truly leveraging those dollars. We're putting a million, two out there and end up with $15 million in projects. That's truly leveraging your dollars.
Yeah, and we did tons of analysis in terms of the leveraging of private investment. We also looked at the cost per job. We know that in the one revolving loan fund that has come through the city in the last three years, basically for every job, it costs the city just under $20,000. Through our Issue Eight programs, those jobs have cost the city $6,300. So it's three times less expensive per job created through our Issue Eight programs. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I can see that the revolving loan fund may not be absolutely a good fit for the small businesses that we have in the community, mostly dealing with, as has been explained, the, a lot of the details are required in terms of reporting and so forth. I would like to point out, though, prevailing wage is something that communities all across the country manage to get development, paying prevailing wage. And I think on some projects, we should point out that, especially in construction projects, there are times that a union laborer, union laborer does better work, depending on what it is. So I don't have a problem with shutting down this revolving loan fund, because this is something that could be positive. But I do, the concept of prevailing wage as something that prevents it from being successful is, I think, easy to say, not so much proven. We, as a government, should be trying to pay, trying to pay people living wage and appropriate wage for their work. And I just want to go there with that. Additionally, the Second Amendment to move this money into clearance and demolition, I want to point out that to begin with, this, it's CDGB money, and it exists for the purpose, the program allocates grants to communities to develop decent housing, suitable living environment, and opportunities, opportunities to expand economic opportunities principally for low and moderate-income persons. It's not Jackson Street Pier. It's as simple as that. It doesn't, doesn't fit for me. The money was given to us by the government to do that, and just like with every program, and I've read the regulations, that you, if you call a bureaucrat and talk long enough, you can convince them to give you an exemption, because basically they're pushing paper. I would suggest that the decision, if you get five commissioners to vote, that they say it's a good idea, Washington generally won't fight too hard about it. I would suggest that if we have $610,000 that we don't know what to do with, that it is worth the effort to spend it in our neighborhoods, trying to improve the individual, the lives of people in those neighborhoods. You projected a 10-year window to just get even with our sidewalk program at $80,000 to $90,000 a year. Now, I'm not suggesting you need to spend all of this money on that, but the suggestion that somehow or another, it's, we don't have 90 days, we don't want to wait 90 days for it, where these folks are going to have to wait 10 years to get their sidewalks done, or their trees, or any number of other projects. And I would like to point out, too, last month, at the last meeting, I mentioned that one of my objections to Jackson Street Pier is I thought the money could be better spent on, in the neighborhoods, on some things that will get people to move into our community and buy some of these homes. And I was admonished, and it was explained, well, this is only going to be TIF money. Well, you can't do that with TIF money. TIF money's doing Jackson Street Pier. It hasn't been 15 days, and you've already switched that up, and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Now, it was fine, the allocations that we've had with the Issue Eight money, you met what we promised, which was $100,000, or whatever it was. We've been meeting that every year. I suggest that we offered too much, the community, the community accepted too little of that money that Issue Eight generated for use in their neighborhoods. I would suggest that we've gone a step too far when you go from the general tax money that you decide to divert most of it to these larger projects that fewer people, and I'm trying to be as diplomatic as possible about this, that the neighborhoods are not seeing much of, to actually dipping into poor people's money, because that's what CDGB money is. Money specifically given to this community for low-income neighborhoods. And taking that money, Commissioners, I think you make a mistake that when you decide that you think you're just going to wholesale sweep that downtown.
So I think you made it pretty clear, Mr. Lasko, that there were, you take a look at other funding opportunities, and there just simply weren't others that were available at the time before the money would lapse and have to be given back. I assume that that includes sidewalk programs, because that certainly is something that's out in front of us. Can you confirm that?
Yes, we still have to go through, through, Mr. President, we still have to go through the environmental review process for those and work with engineering, and I'm not sure what their timeframe would be on bidding out the sidewalks and getting those done in time.
Thank you. And I do take some exception to the notion that we're not investing in the neighborhoods. The entire Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative program is about exactly that. Mr. Whupser spoke to that a little bit earlier this morning, this evening. The West Side Walkability Project, and we've had several meetings and other scheduled to get additional input from the citizens in terms of what they want in their particular neighborhoods, and there's a significant amount of money that's been set aside for those programs, so I'll just mention that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll use my second time, if you wish, if I may.
I'm going to give others an opportunity to speak.
Okay, please. Please do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Whupser.
I do wish that, as we go forward, that you investigate other programs. I can think of a few off the top of my head that are community programs that are lacking funding. As we've noticed, some of them involve some of the teaching programs for kids in their neighborhoods. Of course, sidewalks and trees are very important, but at least before we get into this, let's look at what could be on the table, what's out there right now as far as community programs and roads, of course, that could be done.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager? Mr. Poole.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that with regard to this 90-day window and the emergencies, the $610,000 in that fund has been there for the last, who knows how long? And the timeframe for bringing this up at the last minute is totally controlled by us. So we've created our own emergency, and using that as a reason why you cannot spend, come up with the opportunities or look into other ways to spend this money for the neighborhoods, I think is a mistake at best.
Unless there are other questions or comments for the city manager, we will turn to old business. Do you mind having any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gray.
My understanding that we need to appoint Commissioner on the administrative benefit review, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Twine to that position with her background in HR and her business background at the Veterans Center. I think she would be a perfect fit for that committee.
Second. Then a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Question carries. Thank you. Mr. Poole, I understand you might have a motion.
Oh, yes.
Regarding the October 23rd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we move the October 23rd meeting from 5:00 to 5:30. It will allow us to attend the ribbon-cutting for the, at the Board of Education, for schools.
Second. Then a motion, second, to move the meeting from 5:00 to 5:30. That's our next meeting, October 23rd, discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Question carries. Mr. Whupser.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out over this past weekend for the firefighters and first responders memorial. The attendance was much larger than last year. I'd like to thank Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Waddington, and Commissioner Poole, they were there, and of course, Commissioner, County Commissioner Matt Old presented a proclamation with me, and so it was an excellent service. And I'm sorry, the chief, I'm sorry, Chief Wilcox presented the reef this year, so I'd like to give thanks and honor to all the first responders here.
Other items of old business, or new business, excuse me. Do want to remind folks, probably a lot of folks know already, there is a football game this Saturday, it's Friday, at 7:00. Sandusky Undefeated is taking on Clyde Undefeated. It's supposed to be one of the great matches in the state going on statewide, so it's pretty exciting. So it's good to have a big team. So audience participation, anyone who addressed the commission, any items of city business, microphone, address, and share with us your thoughts.
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I'd like to address the request for diagonal parking on the Jackson Street Pier. Again, Mr. Pesta stated that it's a matter of math, and parking everywhere is 90 degrees because it's more efficient. The pier will lose parking with diagonal parking. The solution is the walk at the north end. It was explained at previous meetings that bicycles and walkers can use the same walkway if it's 10 feet wide. At the north end of the pier, pull the walkway 10 feet south of the flagpoles, not 20 feet. It takes 50 seconds to walk from one side of the pier to the other, then they're gone. And a 10-foot walkway will accommodate that. Vehicles don't overhang the sidewalk at all, except for some trucks. The curb is high enough to prevent that, so you don't need planter seats to create a barrier. Mr. Pesta has been beefing about the height of that curb since this all started. This leaves the 10 feet to the parking, so it can be diagonal and not lose any parking spaces. Eliminate the planter seats will save money. It has, it was proven in Public Square this summer in Cleveland. These planters get used as trash cans for cigarette butts, snack bags, drink bottles, and soda and coffee cups. 10-foot garden benches are more comfortable and easier to maintain. Flat-top benches don't seem comfortable. Back the benches up to just in front of the flagpoles, now there is more room for the fishing people. I invite you to come halfway up the east side of the pier and park 90 degrees to the walk, and compare that view to the diagonal parking view in the same parking space. This is very important to the people that park down there. At the south end of the west side of the pier is a long building with the restrooms, and the security fence is 40 feet away. But the new design has parking only 20 feet from the building. It was stated that after several conversations with some government entity, it was okay to put parking and walkways this close to the security area. I would think the city would want that OK in writing before design is done for the west side of the pier. This could turn into a huge expense to correct in the future. I didn't know homeland security was so easy with their regulations. Now, I had a different idea. Mr. Pesta said that we absolutely need to have a selfie spot. What I was thinking was instead, a selfie tour. And it starts at the Sandusky State Theater postcard. Every place is a selfie site. There would be a two-foot-by-two-foot paver embedded into the ground. It says selfie site with an arrow where you're supposed to be looking. It would start at the Sandusky State Theater postcard. It would go to the floral clock, then the boy in the boot, then the corner of the Carousel Museum, and visit the Carousel Museum. Then north down the east side of Columbus Avenue to the paver pointing at the State Theater. Next to the Shade Mylander, pointing to the lake with the fountain behind you, and hopefully there's a Jet Express coming in. Down Water Street to the Freedom Park, an interesting statue and a little bit of history for this area. Next to Shoreline Park, you park your car and you walk down to the selfie site pointing at Cedar Point at the end of the pier, and you've got your picture of Cedar Point. Back to Shade Mylander, to a paving pointing to the fountain, and up the middle of Sandusky, right up Columbus Avenue. Then to Jackson Street Pier, to a paver on the wave pointing to the view of the lake and all that's there. And last, but definitely not least, is toffs and the cows. This could be created on an app, and it could be on a flyer at the visitor's center, and I think that would be much more interesting than one great big sign that says you're in Sandusky, because people already know they're in Sandusky, and the postcard would prove that. Thank you.
Anderson Grove, 434 Perry Street. I really, I just have a question. It was stated that we have either 37 or 39 streets slated for repair beginning in 2018, and I would just like to know where we can find the map or whatever you have that shows those streets that will be improved next year, beginning next year.
Yes, thank you. I don't believe that there is a map as such, but I believe that the streets are mostly outlined in the capital plan. But, Mr. Keith, maybe you have additional information on that?
Yeah, through the president. The-
And that's on the website, by the way, the capital plan.
The general plan has the major streets. If we're able to find some additional funding, we'll always look at whatever else we can either expand with those projects or do smaller sections, wherever they may be, depending on what the cost of that project would be and how much money we can find in that year.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. Speaking of revolving loan fund, I just wanted to bring up something here, maybe the public doesn't know about yet. There's been an article in the paper about the Ability Works, and I was on the revolving loan fund when we gave them $100,000 in a revolving loan. Now I see that they want to sell the building. They bought that for $765,000, and they're selling it for $2.3 million. That just about blows me away. I can't believe the evaluation went up that much on something like that. And I want to know if we're going to get our money back when they sell that building. Are we going to donate it, or what? We're going to write it off, or what?
Lasko has an answer.
Through the president, Ms. Johnson, the loan is actually collateralized by a mortgage on the property that would have to be paid in full at the time of property transfer. We've discussed internally, and I don't know that the city would recommend to this commission any reduction in that mortgage. So the loan, excuse me, the mortgage and the loan would have to be paid off as a condition of property transfer in full.
And they know that. They're going to pay that back. We're going to get that money, too, with that revolving loan.
Through the commission president. Neither I, I don't know if any members of the commission or Director Lasko have been approached about working out any details on that, so I don't believe that there's any expectation that we wouldn't be paid in full when that transaction takes place.
I'm sorry, it's not going to be paid?
No, no. I apologize, we believe we are going to be repaid.
He said the opposite. He said that we believe we will be paid.
You believe? Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's a matter of law. There's a mortgage on the property, so you can't transfer title without paying off the mortgage.
Title office pays us.
Mr. Gray.
The point I'm making is exactly that. Mr. Johnson, there's no, there's no shenanigan here. If that property is sold for whatever it's sold for, and we get paid. So there's, it's not incumbent upon Ability Works to communicate to us, you know, what their deal is, or how much they made, or when they're going to close. When it closes, the bank has a fiscal responsibility, or the title company has a fiscal responsibility to pay us off, so I-
So it's the bank's responsibility to pay us?
The title company, the company that clears the title will pay us off.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're going to get our money back. Now, I wasn't going to say anything on this until later on, but since this was brought up about the revolving loan, the revolving loan is obsolete with Issue Eight loans, grants going out. Grants are free. Why would someone come to us and say they want a revolving loan with all the obligation and the paperwork? Pay the principal back, the interest back, and it goes on and on. They have to have so many jobs. It's very restrictive, and it should be, because these are tax dollars. You're giving Issue Eight away. There's no obligation, no restrictions or anything on that. It looks like this revolving loan is going to be set up like the EMS fund, where we couldn't touch the EMS fund, but now that it reaches $400,000 threshold, we get to bleed off the rest of the money. Is this going to be the same way? Are we going to have to have an amendment with this? I'm not understanding all of this stuff. So when you bleed that money off, when it gets up high, because we still have loans out there, we're still getting money into that fund. You can't delete it completely. So is that going to be set up like the EMS fund?
There's been no proposal to do that, so when the money gets repaid, excuse me, it'll be back in the fund, and it'll be up to future commissioners to decide how to use that money.
But you'll have to go for another amendment, right? And have to have a public hearing?
No, it'll be in the revolving loan fund at that point, and it'll be up to the administration to make a recommendation as to how to utilize that money, and then the commissioner will have to vote on that, whether it's a loan or using it for some other purpose, but that will have to be decided at that point in time. It's not, it isn't decided today.
Okay. Okay. I still have some more things on that, but when I get it thrashed out, I'll be up here again. The Chesapeake TIF was supposed to be taking care of the Jackson Street Pier expenses. This was not going to be charged to the taxpayer or anything. Why I think it's not being, the design work money is not coming out of the TIF is because there isn't that much in that TIF. If you recall, $375,000 of the Chesapeake TIF was taken and given to the City Hall developer for startup costs. It was given to him. So now you've got to raid the revolving loan fund. That is too much money to go into a pier. And like I, you know, I've talked, Wes about this, I gave him some points which he brought out. But that is not low and moderate income down there at the pier. You're surrounded by expensive condos, your expensive restaurants and bars, a two-story attorney office down there with a marina. How in the world can you say that's low and moderate income? Maybe by your standards, but how about CDBG? They're going to be looking at that. Let's see. I think that's about it for right now, so I'll have, when the public portion comes up, I'll be having more to say on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out the pier is open to all to use in the city, so I disagree with the characterization. Please, ma'am.
Arlene Thompson, Adrian Circle. And I take a little bit of exception to the pier being open to all. Yes, it is open to all the city residents, but it may be that you're trying to attract and make it an attraction with the tour buses for the good time and all this. So I think that might be something that I would take issue with. I also take issue with the 90 days to fix sidewalks. There is no better way for you city leaders to use your money than to make the city safe for the children of this community. When you talk about it takes too much time to plan and do, it didn't take long for you to use the grant that became available to take up sidewalks which were being buckled by the trees. Our street, Adrian Circle, if you drive down there now, you see five red maple trees. Five. There were, our street was lined with red maple trees. But when this money came available to fix the sidewalks, we were told that if we did not choose to have our tree, our sidewalks, or our trees removed, sidewalks wouldn't get fixed for free. You've absolutely raped that beautiful street in the city of Sandusky, of its beautiful trees. We were promised trees would be replaced, have them Xena One. As far as repairing streets, we got some tar and some stone on our cul-de-sac, which was tracked into all the houses when the kids played out in the middle of the circle like they have since my kids were there in the early '70s. It was a cement street, but you patched it with the new process. We don't like it. And I think it looks terrible. And we try to keep our homes up down there, and for what? When we get things like that. Let's go back to the safety of the children of this city. I taught in Sandusky schools many years. My kids have lived on Adrian Circle. We moved from First Street over to Adrian Circle, built a house because it was in the Ontario School District. Well, then the schools messed with us, and they had to go to Sycamore and Hancock, which were perfectly fine. But my kids would have to walk down Adrian Circle, where we have sidewalks, and then down to Bauer Avenue to catch a bus. No sidewalks on the city street, Pipe Street. And we've been told over and over, it's because the people who live there don't want to pay the price. Well, if a child gets hurt, those kids are still walking mostly in the snow who live on our street now to catch a bus down by Roadie Street. So there's Remington Avenue. Beautiful. New cement street, sidewalks, curbs, everything. Pipe Street has nothing. We're not low-income exactly, but our kids count. And if you're thinking of taking that money and putting it with the pier, shame on you. Shame on you and your legacy, because there is none. If you truly want to use those funds for the betterment of this city, treat our children kindly and make it safe. But again, you sit there, and I've been through many commissions, city commissions, and we've argued from everything to filling in the Pipe Creek behind our house. They were going to put a golf course up there. We fought that. Mrs. Valley, Frank Valley's wife, she's in her 80s, and she's still fighting to get those insidious weeds behind our home removed. That's a safety issue for the homes that are in that area. And Cedar Point has bought that. Cedar Point now owns behind our home and the other homes that are adjacent to that area. The previous owner came out one day and told us that he was told that he was going to be fined so much per day if that wasn't burned out. They tramp them down, they dry them out, they burn them down, like they did out by the airport. Oh, and there we have that new sports complex. Where are we making it better for our children and for our residents? I hope, and I have to apologize, because when Mr. Poole was finished, I started to applaud, but every little inch that we can get for the better, the true betterment of this city, we have the hospital, and we have Cedar Point. And yeah, we have to do things for Cedar Point. I worked for them for seven years. I loved working there. But catering to them, those are the only employers we have left in this city to speak of, large employers. We need to do something to, do something for the good of the people. You know, I just jumped on the bandwagon for the pier, because doggone it, Sandusky, that is the last place where the citizens of Sandusky can go down and watch Cedar Point. And how many of the people here are employed by Cedar Point? You know, I appreciate the fact that they bring money into our city for you to spend. What I don't appreciate right now is how you're spending it. Do it for the children. They are, when you are in your 70s and 80s, like Mrs. Valley, she's still fighting. She's still fighting to make a better place. And how many more years does she have to fight? Her kids tell her, "Give it up, Mom." No way. She comes over to me, we get on the bandwagon, like we did when they were geese out behind our house. And my kids could take their little sailboat out there and sail around in that water, in a canoe. It was beauty back there. And now there's weeds that Cedar Point owns that they are not being fined so much per day. And the fire department, I believe, there was a, she's talked to the fire department chief, I don't know if it was Chief Wilcox or not, but recently, and we can't get anything done. You are, you are working toward making Sandusky more of an attraction for Cedar Point, Kalahari, and all these other, and the new businesses downtown, great. I love the downtown. But they aren't our city. The city is the entire number of miles that it encompasses.
Ma'am, could you, I hate cutting people off, but I think you're pretty well past five minutes, and you can wrap.
Oh, I didn't know there was, I didn't see anybody pass the limit this time. But if you're tired of hearing from me, that's fine, but I will be back. I will be back.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? If not, then may we adjourn.
Second.